Expulsion hearing, I think that's what stirred them up again. We had a nice little run there. I just knew we had a house for it.
Second week of August.
Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:07 PM. Will take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to have the coordinator call the roll, please.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Scirvano.
Here.
Mrs. McCullough.
Mr. Segal.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Escobedo. With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Rod Widdell and Alan Leon for working behind the scenes to produce the broadcast on Channel 20. So, thank you guys for helping out. We have set time aside tonight for the public hearing of the tentative budget for 2017 and 18. We do not have any public comments, requests submitted on that, but I will ask at this time, are there any board members who have comments regarding the tentative budget? Seeing none, we'll move on then to recognize and celebrating outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, board members. We are always excited when we have the house packed with students and their families and teachers and coaches, and tonight we are celebrating all of our spring state-level competitors. So, please bear with me. First up, we have IHSA Girls Track and Field. RPS 205 sent three athletes from three schools to represent Rockford in the IHSA Class 3A Track and Field State Tournament at Eastern Illinois University. Congratulations to the following students for making it downstate over the weekend. Guilford High School sophomore Shanaya Johnson competed in the triple jump. East High School senior Maisha Stapleton competed in the 100-meter dash. And Auburn High School senior Gabrielle Maculin competed in the 300-meter low hurdles. Congratulations. Are those, are they here with us? Let's give them a round of applause anyway. Next up, we have the IESA Girls and Boys Track and Field. More than 30 students represented Rockford Public Schools at the IESA Class 2A Track and Field State Tournament over the weekend in East Peoria. From Flynn Middle School, Paige Alms took fifth place in the 100-meter dash and 11th place in the 200-meter dash. Michelle Gasmann took 12th place in the 800-meter run and 11th place in the 1600-meter run. The team of Paige Alms, Nadia Bolden, Teandra Henry, Olivia Robinson took 12th in the 4x100-meter relay. The team of Paige Alms, Michelle Gasmann, Teandra Henry, Olivia Robinson, and Nadia Bolden also competed at state in the 4x400-meter relay. Rashid Johnson took 11th in the 200-meter dash. Juan Del Rio competed in the 1600-meter run. The team of Adrian Agee, Cameron Beigel, Jayden Green, and Rashid Johnson took 6th in the 4x100-meter relay. And the team of Adrian Agee, Cameron Beigel, Derek Chapman, Rashid Johnson, Jayden Green competed in the 4x400-meter relay. The team of Lakai Fuljum, Zaire Sherman, Jeremiah Crawford, DJ Jefferson, Jonathan Grant took 10th in the 4x100-meter relay. And then the team of Leo Bueno, Felipe Galacio, Shamar Holt, Ricky Valerio, Angel Reyes Delgado competed in the 4x200-meter relay. All right, I know some of those folks got to be there. All right, that's what's up. All right, from Kennedy Middle School, James Purefoy competed in the 100-meter dash and also took 13th place in the 200-meter dash. The team of Devonte Ashens, Quentin Island, Marquez Gray, Jacob Holloman, and Julius Purefoy took 8th in the 4x100-meter relay. Quentin Island competed in the shot put. From Eisenhower Middle School, Owen Dahlberg competed in the 400-meter dash. And from West Middle School, Malik Gordon qualified for state in the long jump, and Brandon Ferguson competed in the 110-meter hurdles. Are those students here with us? All right, let's give it up for them. All right, all right. Okay, moving right along to IHSA Journalism. Three East High School students and five Guilford High School students qualified for the IHSA Journalism State Tournament after placing in the top three at the IHSA Journalism Sectional at Northern Illinois University in April. Guilford High School's Marie Burns took 5th place at the state tournament in feature writing and taking 2nd place at sectionals. Also from Guilford, Jonathan Jurgens competed in broadcast news, Riley DeBoer competed in headline writing, Kaitlin Albrecht competed in yearbook copywriting, and Malika, I'm sorry if I messed that up, Semokovic competed in editorial writing. Guilford students Jacob Morgan, Charles CJ Larson, and Olivia Haggerty also went to state to participate in a pilot event for video broadcasting. From East, Brooklyn Gunterman competed in copy editing after placing first at sectionals. Morgan Peace competed in yearbook caption writing, and Matty Taylor competed in broadcast news. Congratulations. I know they're here. All right, State Science Olympiad. Guilford's High School Science Olympiad team competed in the state tournament earlier this month at the University of Illinois. The Vikings medaled in the following events. Andrew Albers and Nick Albers took 5th in chemistry lab. Sayed Ahmad and Andrew Albers took 5th in forensics. Rashad Ahmad and Josh Albers took 3rd place in hovercraft. And Rashad Ahmad and Sayed Ahmad took 1st place in thermal dynamics at the State Science Olympiad Tournament. The team also performed well in the following events: anatomy and physiology, ecology, experimental design, game on, material science, microbe mission, Mission Possible, towers, and density. Congratulations to these students and the entire Science Olympiad team. All right, outstanding physics students. Three, there they are. Three Auburn High School students were named outstanding physics students and received an award from their teacher, Mariana Rugerio, through the American Association of Physics Teachers. Association members are invited to select the top three physics students for the award, and Ms. Rugerio chose Emily Calgaro, Rachel Corzine, and Kaylee Knott. Emily received a Rockford Promise Scholarship and will attend Rock Valley College, then plans to transfer to the University of Illinois Chicago to study physics. Rachel will attend Knox College and plans to pursue a PhD in physics. Whoa. Kaylee received a full ride to the Illinois Institute of Technology, which includes a research stipend. Yeah. She plans to focus on astrophysics. Congratulations. All right, Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. More than 2,800 students across the country have been recognized by the nonprofit Alliance for Young Artists and Writers in 2018. The awards are the nation's longest-running and most prestigious recognition program for creative teens in grades 7 through 12. This honor opens doors for students by providing access to future scholarship programs and workshops, the ability to have work publicly displayed. The awards include 29 categories for things like poetry, photography, sculpture, humor, editorial cartoons, and video game design. Students from four RPS 205 schools were recognized with Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Some students received more than one award, so you may hear several names more than once. Thank you, CB. Golden Gold Key Award winners from Auburn High School, Sidney Fields, Drew Iverson, Lily Johnson, Esther Veitch, I'm sorry if I messed this up, Ty Kiatacom, and Olivia Lentz each won two Gold Key Awards. From Jefferson High School, Zaria Chandler, Simone Joyce won two Gold Key Awards. Katherine Martinez won four Gold Key Awards. From Thurgood Marshall School, Nam Pham. And the Silver Key Award winners from Auburn High School, Ariane Ariola, Ty Kiatacom, Eli Mana, Brady Peterson, and Esther Sales. From Jefferson High School, Katherine Martinez and Alexandria Nunez. And from Risa Middle School, Madelyn Zingray. Any of those folks here? Also, we had some from the same categories. We had some folks that received honorable mention that we certainly want to recognize. From Auburn High School, Fiona Bingley, Sidney Fields, Drew Iverson, Jack Johnson, Stephanie Romero, Diana Sanchez-Arieta, Esther Veitch, and Olivia Lentz each received two honorable mentions. Paloma Velasco received three honorable mentions. From Jefferson High School, Simone Joyce, Alexandra Nunez, Laura Velasquez, Zaria Chandler, and Joanna Drake each received three honorable mentions. And then from Risa Middle School, Amaria Goldsmith, Mackenzie McClintock, and Jasmine Nain. And then from Thurgood Marshall School, Juliana Gamero and Riotto Tu. Are those folks here? And of course, none of their success would be possible without the help from their teachers, coaches, and school staff. And let's give it up for their parents and their families. Thank you, sir.
That was fun, Earl. Good job. Did anybody happen to notice that the Auburn Knights won the State Line Quiz Bowl championship? Fourth year in a row. Way to go, Auburn! Okay, thank you all for being here. We're so proud of everything you've accomplished. We are now going to move on to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting, where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. I think I'm going to pause for a minute, let it quiet down a little bit. Okay, I'm going to continue. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. the board. It is not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names, the one whose turn it is to speak and the one who will speak next. If you are the second person, please come to the front, sit in a vacant chair, and we can devote the maximum amount of time to our public comments. There is a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. We thank you for your interest and for your cooperation with our guidelines. Our first speaker tonight is Dr. Brandy Brown, to be followed by Penny Deveraux Wax, I believe. Okay, Deveraux? Okay. Brandy Brown. Okay? Is the mic on? Okay.
There is a Rockford Public School high school principal breaking the law, displaying and having discriminating attitudes of behavior, and a wrongful interrogation, suspension, and expulsion process, and is causing major harm such as feelings of inferiority and distress to a student by making her feel guilty before a fair trial. This student is my daughter. On Monday, April 24th and 25th, brownies were made by a white male sophomore student at the high school on Spring Creek Road. This student made these brownies at his house. Now, you can check the nursing records, because the student that ate these brownies, they became sick, okay? And I call them poisonous brownies. Because in this expulsion packet, hold on, let me just back up. The student that made these brownies, they made, he made at his house. They were brought to this high school, and they were distributed to the students. My daughter did eat one of them. However, the kids became very sick. And in this process, and I'm real frustrated, because in this expulsion, the suspension is wrongful, the side of the parent, which is me, has not been heard. And in this expulsion packet, it doesn't even really describe, number one, the police report, evidence of marijuana, and the white boy that made the brownies isn't even suspended. He's been going to school. And so I do have questions, because in my complaint, the white student that made these brownies has not been suspended, as well as the principal has broken the law. The principal broke the law, interrogated my daughter without a witness, which violated her right, as well as he belittled, belittled her. He made her feel inferior, and his actions is not appropriate of school officials.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brown, your time is up. I will ask now for Penny to step forward, to be followed by Reverend Derek Shelby.
Good evening. As already stated, my name is Penny Deveraux. I am the grandmother of the student of my daughter, Dr. Brandy Brown, and I stand with concern regarding a due process. Certainly, when we deal with situations with our children, they impact families. So I stand to represent process, fairness, and a thorough review of all stipulations, standards, and statutes relative to any situation. So my comments in supporting my granddaughter, who is a very outstanding young lady, as these appeals come before you, the school board, reviewing thoroughly and making crucial decisions that not only impact the future and the current situation of a student in your care, but families and community. So I stand to just ask that there is a very thorough and cautious review of my granddaughter's expulsion. And we want all of our children educated in this community. And certainly, best-foot practice that allows students to get an education is what I advocate for and stand for. So I stand in support of my granddaughter, and a fair review of a process. And my daughter, Dr. Brandy Brown, I do thank you for your time and your fearful review.
Thank you. Reverend Shelby, to be followed by Brittany Cotton.
Matthew Chapter 18, verses 1, 2, and 6. At the same time came the disciples unto Jesus, saying, "Who is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?" And Jesus called the little child unto him and set him in the midst of them. But who shall show offend one of these little ones which believe in me? It were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and he was drowned in the deepest sea. I'm amazed at our society today, especially this wicked city and this filthy school board. We got this misconception about the Lord Jesus. There's so much in the Bible, the Lord is a man. Well, he is a man. And they show, this Jesus they preach about now is some kind of fluff. He's called the Son of God and the Son of Man, and the Lord said, "If you rape kids, you should put a millstone around your neck and jump in the sea." That mean commit suicide. You don't hear nobody quote those scriptures. And this filthy school board in Rockford done rape so many black kids, Rockford has a handful of raping black kids for no reason, because of the color of your filthy white skin. We got a rotten superintendent in Rockford, and he's a thief. All these, all these buildings he's building, and it's his wife getting the money, putting the money in his damn pocket. And you gonna tell me y'all doing a good job? And last year, you kicked out 200 black kids a month out of this system? That's evil. That's pure evil. You took out the Brandy Brown seat, stole that. Now you raping a child, and all these black men sitting around with their thumbs up their butt, don't say nothing or do nothing. It's a disgrace for the Lord.
Thank you for your time.
Thank the Lord Jesus for his blood.
Brit, Brittany Cotton.
Wednesday, May 16th, my daughter Evelyn came home from her bus 1:15 like this. Her driver had hopped the car in impatience and sent her flying into an exposed bolt. Are these acceptable driving standards for District 205? The driver offered no help or explanation. He was completely unaware and apathetic. Who is held responsible for this? If the drivers cannot watch the children, why do we not have bus aids? How many children will be hurt by negligent, unsafe driving before safety measures are increased? How will we prevent this in the future? Drivers' jobs are to bring home the children safe. And if this was your child, how would you feel? Thank you.
Thank you. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation. Are there any board member comments at this time? Mr. Siegel?
Today, I got to do the thing that I have enjoyed the most, being on the board, and got to do it for the third time, which is great. I got to go to the graduation over at Roosevelt. 179 students graduated, and they were all extraordinary, as were their teachers, the administrators, their families. They all worked together within some pretty extraordinary circumstances to achieve some extraordinary gains. And the thing that struck me the most was listening to students talk about their school as family. Obviously, there's no surrogate for a real family, but it was very heartening to hear how these students spoke of their principal, their teachers, and each other. This was a really amazing celebration. I wish everybody could have seen it.
Thank you. Any other board member comments at this time? If not, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes of May 5th, 2018. Payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request log, contracts under $10,000, and travel. The bid recommendations for rubber mulch and for the West Middle School asbestos abatement. The recurring contracts for Power School Special Education System. Addendum, the Allied Benefit Systems Contract Renewal, Chromebook Lease, Advanced Planning Technology Net Requests. Forecast Five Analytics, Data Analytics Program and Licenseure Agreement for Finance. The other consent items, including the following, the monthly invest report, investment report through April of 2018, the financial results through 2000, April 2018, the builder's risk insurance annual renewal, the resolution designating custodian of employer-sponsored code 403B plan, the new school construction change order logs, the RPS managed work change order logs, the facility rental fee waiver for the Rockford Police Department, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have then the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following items. The appointment of Joshua Rollins as 10-month elementary dean at Marshall Elementary School. The appointment of Kelly Kirchner as a 10-month elementary assistant principal at Swan Hillman Elementary School. The appointment of Blake Hand as an 11-month elementary principal at Welsh Elementary School. The salary adjustment for the director of payroll. The resolution authorizing notice of charges and dismissal of a tenured teacher, Marcel Chu, and the HR organizational report and addendum. And the following closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4191 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018-19 school year through the first semester of the 2019-20 school year. Student 4192 is expelled for the remainder of this school year through the first semester of next school year. Student 4195 is expelled for the remainder of this school year through the entire 2018-19 school year. The expulsion for student 2035 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year through April 13th of 2019. The expulsion for student 4190 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year through the entire 2018-19 school year. And the expulsions for student 4194 and 4196 are held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018-19 school year. And the following closed session consent items for students with EIA's include students 1019, 1020, 1021, student 3541, 3542, 3549, 3551, student 3552, 3553, 3554, student 3555, 3556, 3557, student 3558, 3559, 3560, 3561, 3562, 3563, student 3564, 3565, 3566, 3567, 3568, and student 3569. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent item?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel.
Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
Item 12A.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled for the closed session consent items.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Now I'll take a motion and a second to approve closed session consent item 12A, which is the appointment of Joshua Rollins.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion. Have the coordinator call the roll.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Um, yes.
Mr. Siegel?
More emphatically, yes.
Mr. Connor?
Hmm. Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Stay.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, one abstained, two absent.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Jarrett.
Wonderful time of the year to celebrate excellence. We had a chance to see some of the great things our students are doing tonight. In the middle of graduation season, we've had two ceremonies already. We had a lovely ceremony at Wilson Aspire last week honoring two students who have completed the program. And we had, as Mr. Siegel alluded to, a very, very exciting ceremony today at Roosevelt. We have our four traditional high schools that are going to be graduating their students tomorrow and on Wednesday. Looking forward to that. We also had the Academic All-Stars Event, where we honored our top 120 students, 25 per traditional school, top 20 at Roosevelt, and our top 10 at all of our middle schools, and top 5 in our special programs. So there were hundreds of students that were recognized for academics, for athletics. We had a national merit war winner. And then finally, we really had an opportunity to continue to renew our commitment to high school academies. The Academy Awards recognize the outstanding high school performers in all of our four key academy areas, as well as our two district-wide special programs. So that was really, really exciting to see those students and their faculty and staff get some much-deserved recognition for their hard work around developing college and career readiness skills. And finally, shout out to Marsh. They invited my chief of communications, Earl Dotson Jr., and I out to, they challenged us. They had a 32-team book bracket mirroring the NCAA tournament, and Mr. Dotson Jr. and I had the opportunity to read the winning book. He actually read the winning and second-place book, so he gets some extra credit for that. And as a former English teacher, I really enjoyed the passion for reading that these students exhibited. These were seventh-grade students largely that participated in the conversation, the level of sophistication, and it was really fun to spend some time in front of a classroom of students talking about books again. And really, really thought it was wonderful that they spent time fighting through a 32-team bracket to come up with the winner, a book called Refugee, which I highly recommend. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports, and the first one is the Education Committee. Mrs. McCulloch.
So Education Committee met in this room last week, Tuesday, May 15th. We had three, basically three presentations. The first one was about resource adoption, which will be coming to the board in June, because these will be purchases out of the 2019 budget. So, but we had our presentation and had all the questions answered. There were three sets of resources that we're looking to adopt. The first one is for middle school English Language Arts. And one of the things that the educators heard loud and clear was that we would like a rubric of how decisions were made. And so for all of these, we're presented a rubric with not only content, professional development, cost and, or cost. And so it wasn't just decided, you know, and then we went out and got a price on something. So I commend the progress that we made in that in just a short period of time, like in a month. They really, really took that on, so thank you. Our current 6 through 8 English Language Arts has two separate texts. There's a reading text and a writing text. And what the curriculum leadership teams decided is that we needed a text that integrates the two, both the reading and writing. So they did choose, based on the rubric, which is in your, you know, in your board docs under Ed Committee, if you want to look at it, the Pearson My Perspectives. And one of the things that's going to change by having a single text for both subject areas is that they're going to have to do it with a block schedule. Therefore, when they bring this into the district next Therefore, when they bring this into the district next year, we're going to start with two schools. Kennedy already has block scheduling, so Kennedy's going to do it, and Eisenhower is also going to pilot it, and then the other middle schools will do it the following year. The cost of that text for all the schools is $548,000. That includes 10 days of PD. This is a text with six years of digital updates, and it's text for both the teacher as well as the students. And so they will roll out this summer with PD for the Eisenhower and Kennedy, and then they'll do another set of PD next summer for the other schools as they bring that in. The next group that we looked at was social studies, and this also was a middle school adoption. The current books that they're using are from 2008, 2009. The word that the dean used to describe them was decayed. So, not to mention outdated, especially if you're looking at history, 10 years behind is, you know, there's some gaps. So the textbook that was recommended, they looked at three different vendors, and here again was a great job with a rubric. And I could, I, God, I marked it in here. Yeah. So that they looked at all three books. This is what you'll look if you see online for the rest of the board members. But they looked at all three vendors, used a four-point scale, looked at the content, the disciplinary concepts, the instructional supports, and the PD and the cost, and used all those to come up with the best, their recommendation. And the recommendation that they made is a $500 and $5,000 spend, and that is TCI. I'm sorry, I don't know what TCI stands for, but it's a company, publisher. That professional development is just a half a day per title, and that too would be a purchase for, out of next year's budget. The third group that we looked at really should be close to our hearts because we just recognized a whole bunch of physics, outstanding physics students, and this would be the adoption of an AP Physics 1 book. Currently, we have AP Physics B, and the way the standards are, it's now divided into AP Physics 1 and AP Physics 2. We actually have four classes in the district currently. Three are at Auburn, one is at Guilford. We have two teachers teaching it. And the book is a textbook, and some of the strengths with this textbook that they found was that it was a strong reflection of diversity. There was a connection between physics and the other science fields, the other disciplines, and there was a strong mix of conceptual and procedural learning of the content. And it included online labs. And the cost for that one, I think I just said, was $21,000. So those will all come to us, but I really do believe that all the questions were asked and answered, both about process and how they decided or chose which books to recommend. And as I said, the rest of the presentation or PowerPoint and the charts are online under Board Docs Education Committee for May 15th. We had two other presentations. One was an update on our bilingual program. The other was an update on our Title I and Charter School. And I have asked Ms. Detman if she would kind of consolidate. It was really long, and you know how long I can talk, and I thought maybe she could consolidate and make it a little bit quicker for you on the key points. So I'm going to cede the floor to Ms. Detman.
Thank you. I'll do my best to kind of condense a lot of content. I'll start with the bilingual presentation. Essentially, I'll hit on four key areas. Number one, Mr. Nascimento just reiterated that the goal of the bilingual department is to develop English language proficiency in our English learners across the district. He briefly described our programs, TBE and TPI, Transitional Program of Instruction for TPI, and then Transitional Bilingual Education, TBE. He touched a little bit on a change in the exit criteria from the state with the access assessment. The access assessment measures language proficiency and language acquisition. And as a result of the change in the exit criteria, we went from 12% of our students exiting to 3. This, across the state, there was a similar trend. The average across the state was 2%. So we were 1% above the state average. In response to that trend across the state, they've changed the exit criteria again back to their previous levels, so we would anticipate seeing higher levels next time around. Their key department work for the 1718 school year really focused around responding to key audit findings from the 2016 audit. Most particularly, they focused on reducing the number of waived students, providing language support services across the district, and ensuring that we have instructional resources in all classrooms. Moving forward, the bilingual department will turn their focus very tightly on K5 curriculum and instruction, both for TBE and TPI programming. And they're also going to focus on the clarity and the frequency of their communication directly with teachers across the district. For the Title I report...
Could I stop for a second before we move on to that? Just a cheat sheet, if you need it, is in the PowerPoint for what each of those programs are, because it's, it kind of sounds like alphabet soup sometimes when she talks about TBE, which is the one, instruction in English and native language, just to reiterate.
Our two TBE programs are only in Spanish and in Arabic.
In Arabic. And then TPI is students who speak other languages, that we don't have enough students to fill classrooms with, but we need to provide support for them as they transition into the school.
And they're taught exclusively in English, and they have ESL support.
An ESL?
English as a second language.
Okay. And then the TBE developmental is listed on here, provides content instruction in both native language and English for students to acquire proficiency in both languages. I've heard it a lot of times, and I still mix it all up, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that there is sort of a cheat sheet in here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Transitioning to Title I, Dr. Wolf began with a little bit of history in that we are transitioning from No Child Left Behind fully into ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act, and that will complete that transition in July of 2018, so that's coming up very quickly. We still have challenges remaining for state guidance on accountability metrics and their timing for budgets, but we're working as quickly as we can to respond to that information as it comes out. He reiterated the point that historically, the focus for Title I has been and remains improving student outcomes. A couple of key things to remember about Title I is that it's supplemental to a core program of instruction. It represents about 4% of our total spend for the district, and it is incredibly complex. And so that is, we are thankful for the work of Dr. Wolf and his department in helping us wade through all of that complexity. District-level improvements have happened as a result of Dr. Jarrett's lobbying efforts over the last three years. Some key takeaways from those improvements are that we were able to increase from $30,000 to $50,000, the amount of money that we spent on tutoring just this academic year. So we were able to increase both the number of tutors and the number of hours in our schools. Moving ahead to next year, we've increased our FTE, or Full-Time Equivalency Count, by 20 for instructional supports and parent liaisons. An additional improvement this year is that we've created a Title I menu. The work of Dr. Wolf's department has always been that we need to ensure that each spend is both necessary and allowable, and what we've added this year is that it is also aligned. So instead of kind of having the Wild West of all resources and possibilities and services, we've really streamlined them as an ed services team. And so we've provided a menu that have categories of personnel, professional development contracts and other opportunities, online services for students, activities for students, activities for parents, and then aligned supplemental instructional resources to support our new curriculum and interventions. We also spent a little bit of time reviewing the school rankings, including their projected allocations. Want to pause there?
No, I think you got it all. I thought the menu was really something that the principals really liked. I'm going to tell you when I got, I probably shouldn't tell you this. When he got on the board and we had Title I money left at the end of the year, they went out and bought games and put them in all the, I mean, you know, and they're used, but it wasn't at a place where we were actually aligning it with curriculum and using it because it was an afterthought almost, though we've got to spend the money. So I'm just really grateful to hear.
Yes, and we are, as a curriculum department and ed services division, we're really pleased to be able to help schools find those aligned resources, so we can all start rowing in the same direction.
There might be some games in those resources, but...
Sure. And then the last portion of Dr. Wolf's update was our charter schools, and he described really three phases of history with charters: initial, improving, and ideal. To briefly describe the initial phase would be kind of a distant relationship. Improving is where we are building relationships. And then our ideal state is that we are partners in educating our students with metrics for accountability and a system for renewal in place. So he reviewed kind of those three phases, and right now, we're currently in the improvement phase. There are a few key points with the work that we're doing right now. Number one is Dr. Jarrett's ask for a stronger framework for accountability in advance of charter renewals. We can recognize that our framework in the past has not been as strong as it needs to be. Secondly, we need to strengthen our internal capacity for charter management through additional research and networking. Third, we need to focus on building relationships with charters who serve our students. Number four, we need to develop both the framework for accountability and the scorecard. And then finally, strengthening the renewal process as a whole. As a reminder, we have renewals coming up. Legacy and Galapagos are up for renewal in June of 2019. Jackson Charter is up in June of 2020. We also spent a moment reviewing their current enrollment data. Galapagos is currently at 294 students, Legacy at 323, and Jackson at 416. Also provided in the packet on Board Docs, you can find all of the Illinois Interactive Report Card data for each of the charter schools as well. We also talked briefly and saw an example, and this is also in Board Docs, of the key indicators for the accountability template. Dr. Wolf has spent a great deal of time familiarizing himself with NACSA, National Association of Charter, what's the S? No? Charter School Authorizers?
Yeah.
Yeah, the obvious S in the business. And these are the key indicators that we'll be focusing on: state and federal accountability, student growth, student proficiency, financial and regulatory compliance, financial stability, and high school measures. And again, these are based on the NACSA framework, and a description of what each of those means and what kind of information we'd be looking for is also available in your Board Doc packet. And then finally, he provided a timeline of key activities. So we began in July 2016 with Dr. Jarrett kind of casting a new vision for our relationship with our charters, and that will continue through this fall. We'll be doing some site visits. We'll be headed, sending representatives to the NACSA National Convention. November, we'll disseminate school report cards and ESSA accountability reports. December and January, as a board, you'll begin to see renewal packets. February and March will be public hearings. March to April ish is when you'll be voting. And then if the charter is authorized for Legacy and Galapagos, we begin a new charter period July 1st, 2019.
I don't know if you have questions about that. I meant to, when I did those acronyms, just tell you how many students, I thought you'd be interested in how many students were actually serving in the program, so I'm going to kind of just back to bilingual.
Oh, sure.
Update. And we serve 3,278 students. The TBE, that's when we have the specific classrooms for the Hispanic and the Arabic speakers. We serve 2,953 students in 10 buildings. And for the TPI students, the students who are speaking the other languages, we have them in 17 buildings, and there are 325 students. So out of, what do we have, 28,000 or so, it's a good 10% of our students that are involved. So I thank you for that update. You did such a great job, I appreciate it. Do you have more questions? Please feel free.
I was going to ask about the enrollment at the charters. There were how many at Galapagos?
294.
294. And that's over, how many grades that's?
They are K...
Eight through eight.
Eight, yeah.
And there were how many at Legacy?
Legacy, sorry, I'm going tab to tab here. Legacy of 323.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the good news is it gave it over a period of years, how, what the enrollment has been, so you can see the ups and downs, because Legacy is the one that goes through 12th grade. So I think that was...
Okay. Anything else for Ed?
No, other than we're going, I'm sorry, we're going to meet, I was looking at the numbers. We're going to meet again, perhaps for the last time, on June 19th in this room at 5:30 PM.
Okay. Finance Committee, Mr. Rollins.
Finance Committee met in this room on just this past Wednesday, May 16th, at 5:30 PM. We introduced our new Executive Director of Finance, Mr. Gary Bernadell, who's sitting in the audience. Mr. Bernadell, if you want to wave, so get a chance to say hi to Mr. Bernadell. We had an administrative update from our CFO about the 2017 audit findings and corrective action plans. So our last external audit resulted in five deficiency items and two material weakness items. Ms. Yar went through the action plans to correct those. Of the seven items, four of them have been 100% corrected. One will be 100% corrected on June 18th, which is when one of our CDs comes due and the material weakness or the deficiency related to that. And then the two remaining are 98% completed. So everything's on track to be addressed. The second update had to do with financial services processes, and Ms. Yar just gave us a presentation on some of their initiatives to improve services within the financial services area, most of which involved, well, again, it's all processes, a lot of it is software, some of it's payroll posting. We talked about the, our inventory system. They're working on expanding the Hays inventory system to include more items. That led to a, sorry, discussion about how many different inventory systems we have, and I think we were up to three during Finance Committee. So we've got three different inventory systems that are inventorying different things. Just thought I'd mention that. We talked a little bit about that in-touch cash receipting software, which had a very rocky implementation, if you remember. That seems to be at least getting resolved and going a little smoother. And then in terms of software initiatives, they're looking to implement the Budget Position Control Module. They're looking to implement the Accounts Receivable Module, and they're looking, and this is just a highlight, they're also looking to upgrade our timekeeping system. The Kronos timekeeping system is now become out of date. There's a JavaScript problem, and it's just going to have to be updated because it's getting harder and harder to use. The third major item was the budget, which is what we spent most of our time on, and there's going to be a presentation on that under New Business, so I'll just defer it to that new presentation. We will be meeting for, I suppose it could be our last meeting as well, in this room on Monday, June 4th.
Okay. We're now on to Operations Committee report. Mr. Connor?
Operations has not met since our last update, but we will meet again, probably for the last time, in this room on Tuesday, June 5th at 6:30.
Thank you. We'll move on to our, you have a question? No? Okay. We're now on to action items, and our first action item tonight is Board Policy 2.150, the Board of Education Committees that Mrs. Holdley presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? I guess my comment I want to make is that I want to see that we continue to involve community members in some capacity, so we need to be thinking about the best way to do that. Any other comments? I don't know, the coordinator then called the roll on the approval of item 17A.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one, two absent.
Our next item is the naming of the Cherry Valley Gymnasium for Leonard B. Keller, and Dr. Jarrett presented this last month. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or comments? Mr. Connor?
So we're lucky to have a couple family members from the Kellers, and as a reminder, Sergeant Keller was awarded the Medal of Honor for his valor in the Vietnam War. There's actually a good Wikipedia. If you want to read the actual citation, it's... actually a good Wikipedia. If you want to read the actual citation, it's pretty inspiring. So what I'd like to do is ask Nicole Cicardi, who's one of the daughters, Jackie Mitchell is one of the daughters, and Mrs. Timms, who's the new principal at Cherry Valley, to come up to the mic and just say a few words about the gymnasium being named for Leonard B. Keller.
All right. Thank you for having us. I'm Carolyn Timms. I will be the building principal at Cherry Valley Elementary. And with me, I have Nikki Cicardi and Jackie Mitchell, who are both daughters to Leonard B. Keller. And they're very honored. They are very honored and humbled to, for the possibility of having the gymnasium at the new school named after their father. I know at the community meetings that we had held with naming of the school, there were some great stories and very passionate people involved about telling the story of Leonard B. Keller. And the family's very honored to have him recognized in the building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Any other comments?
Let me just say, thank you for their patience. This has been over an hour. So we have to sit here, you don't. So.
That's right. No other questions. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of Item 17B, the naming of the Cherry Valley Gymnasium for Leonard B. Keller.
Mr. Connor?
An emphatic yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Thank you. Our third item tonight is the 2018-19 Student Code of Conduct that Ms. Carter presented at our last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any comments or discussion?
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. Angela, you did such a good job.
Well, I would, I would comment to say, one of the reasons is because they took our comments from the last meeting and incorporated into both the code and to some administrative regulations to cover the things that we wanted to see. And then you already had all the other good pieces. So, thank you.
Yeah. Great job. Great job. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Item 17C for the revised Student Code of Conduct.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Our last item, action item, is the Facility's Master Plan Deferred Maintenance Plan Revision that was presented by Ms. Holdley and Mr. Bailing and Mr. Smith at our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Ms. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Item 17D, the Facility Master Plan Deferred Maintenance Plan Revision.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Okay. We're on to New Business. I'm not sure who's doing this for sure. Budget. Ms. Sather? Right. You're going to present the Resolution to Adopt a 2018-19 Budget.
Good evening. So yes, tonight I will be presenting the Fiscal Year 19 Proposed Budget of the school district that aligns with its strategic plan. So a little bit about the budget development process for our 19 year. Templates were provided to cabinet members. And as these templates were provided, the ask was to reduce their administrative costs by 1% so that these funds could be realigned to support new ASKS of the departments that focuses on student achievement. As the cabinet members compile these new ASKS, you'll see in the next couple of slides, we have summarized the total budgeted dollars that were required in order to implement these for our 19 fiscal year. And we also were able to determine the total budget impact. Cabinet members presented their draft budgets to the Finance Committee for their locations throughout the budget cycle, so from February to late April. And we also held some budget workshops at the cabinet level to, again, prioritize the reinvestments of these funds based on the 1% reduction. And it also gave us an opportunity to reevaluate and review the current budget status of where we're currently at as far as a budget perspective for 19. The priority ASKS were incorporated into the consolidated district budget. And a preliminary FY19 budget was presented to Finance Committee on April 16th, 2018. So some budget items that were reduced in order to meet this 1% reduction are listed here. And this gave the opportunity for department managers and department heads to analyze their expenditures, identify areas where reductions could be made, yet still have the ability to operate efficiently. So in regards to the 1% ASKS to reduce their admin expenses, these budget items potentially were reduced for 19. So this will show our priority funds that were requested. And it's categorized by department and aligned with the strategic plan and the goal of the district. And it also shows the total amount of funds needed to fund these new priority requests for FY19. We can see $4.2 million was requested with the 1% reduction in admin costs. We needed a total of $3.1 million to essentially build these into our 19 budget year. And the next five slides will provide details of the requests. All but those marked with an asterisk were actually presented to Finance Committee through the cabinet presentations. So I'll just highlight some of those that have the largest impact. For the Curriculum Department, related to Goal 1, there's $839,500 built in for the curriculum resource adoption for the new textbooks and resources that will give students and teachers the highest quality resources available for their use throughout the next fiscal year and so on. There's also $343,000 of differential pay budgeted to support some curriculum implementation leaders to enhance student achievement. Related directly to school budgets, there's, we've added additional seven assistant principals for the elementary schools to support the higher student counts from the zone changes. So all but one elementary school will have an assistant principal in the FY19 budget year moving forward. Some priority ASKS for the Support Departments, which includes IT, continuous improvements, HR, security, communication. We do have $200,000 included in the budget for 50 new SMARTboards to use as replacements at schools on an as-needed basis. There's an addition of one FTE Educational Technology Coordinator to lead the advancement of digital learning for students. And we also have $136,000 incorporated for the installation of scanners, updating access systems, and replacement of alarm systems at the schools for security enhancement. Continuing on our Support Department ASKS, we have $251,000 for additional two strategic process auditors and two office professional trainers to provide adequate support for schools for process improvement initiatives. Looking at our capital projects that have been board approved that are incorporated in our 19 budget dollars, we have here $3.76 million in total with the top four there related to school furniture purchases, some deferred maintenance, the West Middle School piping, and atrium windows at the admin building. Kind of the largest dollar amount projects that are in the budget. To continue on the capital projects, these before you, to total the $1.1 million, $25,000, excuse me, were before the board tonight. So those have also been included in our FY19 budget. Some of the larger projects include the exterior painting of the buildings, security parking lot cameras at the high schools, and remodeling furnishing the Business Academy at East and Guilford High. If we look at some of the capital projects that are funded in our Fund 60, our capital fund, and our life safety funds, the $26.8 million here is mostly primarily related to the continuation of our new school constructions, finishing off some interiors, flooring, painting, and library, improvement at schools, and building demolition costs. Again, these are not our operating fund dollars. These are dollars that are spent from our bond proceeds, previous year bond proceeds. Going into some of our budget assumptions, we left enrollment flat as our enrollment trend. So our district enrollment was budgeted flat. And looking at some of the revenue assumptions, based for our local revenue, we have our 2017 property tax levy, which came in at a, had an EAV increase of 2.09%. Had $5.9 million of new property estimated. And it's budgeted at a 99% collection rate. And for our 2018 property tax levy, at this point, it's an estimate, we're including a 2.2% of EAV increase and $6 million new property with the 99% collection rate. So this slide illustrates our property tax levy from 2015 on. And we can see here, our 2017 levy came in at $154,697,000. If we estimate our '18 levy at that 2% EAV increase and $6 million of new property at the tax rate, we're projecting $145,000, million, excuse me, $240,000 tax levy for '18. But we are, you know, in the current budget, we are keeping the levy flat at the '17's current revenue amount of $154,697,000. So looking at the equalized assessed value from 2008 on, we can see here that between 2008 and 2016, our EAV in billions has dropped or decreased 30.5%. From 2016, '17, and the estimated '18, there's a gradual increase of about 1.8% in the EAV for the community. When we look at this related to our tax levy dollars, we can see in 2012 is when the decision was to lower our tax levy rate below the allowable rate. So the drop of $13 million between 11 and 12. And then keeping that tax levy steady through 2012 to 2017, we can see here that that's essentially saved taxpayers approximately $86 million.
We're supposed to cheer when we hear those numbers.
So this slide here illustrates our tax rate trend. Again, from 2011 to 2015, there was an increase in our property tax rate. And in '16 through '18, as our EAV increases, our tax rate is slightly declining. Our '17 tax rate was at 7.6496. And when comparing 2017 actual tax rates, we see here that Rockford is ranked third out of our nine regional school districts at 7.65%, below Harlem and North Boone.
That's a race you don't want to be the winner.
Yeah. So to continue on with assumptions on our local revenue streams here, our corporate personal property tax, we've budgeted flat at our FY18 funding levels at $18.55 million that we've received. And then below here, we see the last six years of our replacement tax revenue and a chart that kind of illustrates that. For state revenue, we've budgeted a 6% increase for evidence-based funding. And again, we looked at the last five years of historical state revenue coming in, took the lower of the five years because of the uncertainty of our state funding at this time. But the 6% estimated at $7.4 million. Etiquette Oracle aid payments, anticipating four payments expected to mirror the FY18's funding levels. For federal revenue, we have an increase in our nutritional program of $1.3 million anticipated, due to anticipated increase in participation for those programs. So if we look at our operating fund revenue pie chart by source, we can see here that our local revenue takes up, is 49% of our total revenue, primarily made up of our property tax and our CPPRT revenue streams, followed by our state revenue of $173 million, which is 40% of the pie. Evidence-based funding, special ed, transportation, early childhood funding falls within that state revenue stream. And then our federal revenue at $49 million is our Title I in our nutrition service revenue. Moving on to our operating fund expenditure budget assumptions, we do have, for salaries, our contractual increases budgeted. We do have three of our union contracts expiring on 6/30/18. So negotiations are currently taking place to settle on those agreements. And a 2% increase budgeted for non-bargaining employees. For employee benefits, there, we've budgeted a 4.9% increase or $2.6 million related to the healthcare expenses of the district. And this assumes a 4% increase in our healthcare claims. Our IMRF employer pension rate is at a blended rate of 7.73%. Our teacher TRS rate at 9.58%. Federal TRS rate at 9.85%, excuse me. And then social security Medicare taxes at 7.65%. So if you look at our operating fund budget expenditures by category, we see here that salary and benefits makes up 75% of our total expenditures of approximately $330 million, followed by our purchase services of 41, I'm sorry, $46.2 million, and then supplies of $36.6 million. This is kind of tiny, but this is our budget overview as a whole. And we can see here that our FY19 budget at this point is looking like it's a $4.1 million deficit, primarily or solely related to $4.1 million of early tax payments that were received. And we will receive those in our FY18 year. So that revenue is actually recognized in our FY18 forecasted column. So if we move those funds into our 19 revenue, we essentially have a balanced budget here. So looking at our ending fund balance for our operating funds, at the end of 19, we will have an ending fund balance of $125,362,873. And that actually is 28% of our operating expenses. Down below, looking at our capital fund programs as far as ending fund balance, at the end of our 19 year, our capital fund and debt service and, I'm sorry, our life safety funds would be at $4.6 million fund balance. So again, these are our capital projects that we're performing in our 19 year that are spending down our bond proceeds. And then a little bit farther down to the left there, we do have to recognize our TRS on behalf, state contribution payments. So those are resulting in $115,972,000. We basically have that flowing in and out as revenue and expenses in our budget year. So if you... So a few potential budget risks for '19 and future years, again, is continuing to keep the tax levy flat with no increase in revenue as our expenses continue to rise. Our evidence-based funding increase assumption at 6 percent could potentially be large, too large of an assumption, and our healthcare claims could exceed our 4 percent increase. So if any of these obviously, you know, start to, if we notice any of this taking place, we definitely will meet together and come up with ways to potentially cut our expenditures in order to maintain a balanced budget. And that concludes the proposed budget presentation. Any questions?
Board members, questions? Ms. McCullough.
I had two as you went through there. One was the building demo, which was like $2.5 million or something like that. Which buildings are we, which ones are on there? This is just for next year, right? So...
Correct.
That wouldn't...
That actually consists of four schools, Walker, Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan, with potential for New Milford if those costs come in a little bit lower than what's been budgeted.
Because I thought the information I'd been given was that it was all five.
Yeah, and then I confirmed with Kevin, I'm sorry to go back to you, but he did say, you know, four for sure with the potential of that fifth school, New Milford.
Right, but if you give a number, and they have an estimate, and we set aside, or so to speak, we budgeted for $500,000 each, that would be five schools at $2.5 million. So is it four schools or is it five schools? Because actually, New Milford was not in our initial capital plan for demolition, was it?
Right.
That was to wait until we were done and see if there was the money left.
Right, right, and that's what Kevin had confirmed this morning. I do know that the worksheet that was provided, you know, was the total cost of the demolition, including, you know, the contingency dollars, design, abatement, so...
So is the 2.5 for four schools or five, I guess is my question?
Four, I believe. Four.
Okay, so it's over, the cost is more than we budgeted for when we did the facilities plan? Because we only budgeted for 500 per school.
Yeah, actually, I'd have to confirm that for you.
Because then my next question would be, what is our contingency for, like, New Milford? Because we were going to pay for that demolition with contingency money from the other, I'm just...
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you. I'll reach to Kevin again, because I know he did provide a worksheet that detailed out the $2.69 million and did have some verbiage in his explanation that it was specifically for four with the potential of New Milford, so I can...
Well, you can just, if you send that to Ms. Fromm, she can forward it to the board members, that worksheet. Maybe that'll just answer the questions.
I will do that.
My other question with that is, what do we do if we don't have the money for New Milford? We're going to have to figure that out. That was part of the reason for the ASK. Also, under federal, you said free breakfast, lunch, increased participation up, what, was it $1.3 million or something like that? Since we provide to every student in the district currently, right, that wants that food, we're still under that program for another year, are we?
Correct.
So is our projection that more students are going to participate in it than are now? And why do we think that? And we just get paid by the number of students that participate, right?
Correct. I think the goal is to increase participation or actually have schools and principals become more involved in offering this breakfast and lunch program so that we can have higher counts, and then that would increase our revenue coming in.
Why?
I can add to that. I can help out with that.
I was going to say, you know, because...
Yeah, the breakfast program is going to be highlighted. Renee, the Food Services Director, she is going to work with the principals on really actively having the principals have participation with breakfast. It hasn't gone, the participation is down, so it hasn't gone as, hasn't increased as much as they would like. So she is actively working with principals to see that we have the breakfast program participation. And we do get paid by the students.
No, I understand that. I'm still not understanding, you know, my kids would go to school and they'd already eaten, there's a lot of students that we have that don't.
Right.
And for sure, we would like to make sure that those students are fed, but to push other students who are getting a meal at home just because we want to increase participation, I just don't understand. Or are we feeling like we're not reaching the students we need to reach? And how are we determining that?
How are we determining what?
That we're not reaching the students who we feel need it?
Mrs. Beauchamp, well, it basically is doing an estimate, as we do with all of our budgetary areas, and she's looking to set a target based on what demand should be, and she's setting a strategy to go out and set forth in that area. And so I would imagine she will be presenting to a committee relatively quickly to talk in greater detail about this strategy.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I'm saying, but I think the question was, well, how do we know we're going to hit the numbers? And I think what we can, I don't think we can ever guarantee we're going to hit the numbers, but I think we can guarantee we're going to do the work differently to try to drive those counts.
Okay. I think, Mr. Connor, or are you next?
Yeah, one quick, I did know that one was coming up, but they did present that to Operations. It's been quite a while. And part of it is that, from the need standpoint, it's not just getting kids who are not fed at home in that way, but apparently the feedback is that even the rate of families that you think might feed at home, the point was that they're not. So there's a participation rate that's actually gone down, right, if you look at the numbers. So it's an overall number, so they, meaning Food Services, came to Ops and basically said the participation rate was down. So, I mean, I can understand that. To maximize what we've got there, that was actually not going to be my question, no. After I answered that...
You forgot what it was.
I forgot.
You want me to go to someone else?
Yeah, go to somebody else and come back.
Mr. Owens, if you have a question, you had your light on earlier.
I didn't have a question, I just had a sort of a, my editorial gloss is that our major risk factors, our major risk factor is the assumptions on the state revenue. You know, we live in Illinois, we have to approve this budget before the state approves a budget, if it ever approves a budget. And so, but we have to take a guess. It's a reasonable guess based upon the past increases we've seen from the state, but it's a guess, it's a guestimate, so, and that's the best we can do. The second-largest budget risk from my perspective is healthcare costs. It's the second-largest number in our budget behind salaries. We're self-insured, up to, we do have some self, we do have some reinsurance, reinsurance, but within that reinsurance, we're self-insured, and there's an element of randomness to that. We've had very good experience most years. There was a year, a couple of years ago, I think we had a 10 or 11 percent increase. That could happen, there's nothing anybody can do to predict that or control it. But, so from my standpoint, that's the largest revenue risk and the largest expense risk, and both of them are reasonable estimates, but that's all they are, is estimates. I just want to emphasize, I mean, Michelle did cover it, but I do want to emphasize, this budget will show up as a $4.1 million deficit budget. We've talked about this repeatedly, but I never know who's paying attention when. We got $4.1 million early that we should have gotten next year, but we have to book it this year because people paid their real estate taxes early based upon the changes in the tax law in Washington, DC. And so we're going to show that as a surplus this year, and we're going to spend it as part of next year's budget, and that's the only reason this shows up as a $4.1 million deficit budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Connor?
I remembered. Hey. Phew. Age, 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 don't get old, I'm telling you. I think the...
Alternative is some.
Yeah, the alternative is worse, I know, that's I've heard, but some days I don't believe it, is that in terms of the demolition, so what occurred to me is, and please verify, I believe that 2.6 was based on an assumption of five, and I believe the actuals are going to, actually going to come in under for the demolition, because I don't believe on the actual bidlets that they were 500. I think they were all under, but you might want to double-check that. So those are all budget numbers, you know, and I think, again, the actuals will come in. So the point about the funding for New Milford, I suspect all that will be under. So if you could verify that, because I thought, I remember again in Ops that that was brought up, but, you know...
Actually, Fred was kind enough to text Kevin and ask about this in specific, and he had replied and said, Walker, Thompson, White Swan, and Cherry Valley, New Milford has been postponed. So I will follow up with the worksheet that Kevin did provide to...
Okay, but if you could look into the actuals, because I believe several of those contracts came in already under, so...
I think Walker was 250 something.
Yeah, I think Cherry Valley was under. So anyway, if you could double-check that, because, I mean, the concern's valid, I just think that the actuals are under and that these are budgeted numbers, you know?
I have two comments, and they're both positive, okay? First of all, I want to commend the administrative team on the 1 percent operating reduction concept, because to me, what this means is this organization is maturing. We spent a lot of time and effort over the last several years developing and putting together a strategic plan that we were going to stay focused on, you know, and figure out what's the most important things. And what this message to me about this reduction, 1 percent reduction in operating expense to be spent on strategic initiatives, says we are committed as an organization to these five key things that we want to focus on as important in this organization. So to me, that's a maturing of our organization, so kudos to the administrative team for coming up with that one. Second, your presentation was fantastic, and I think it needs to be standard. I mean, the pie charts are beautiful, all the highlights are, it's real easy to follow, and so that's important to board members, because sometimes we get inundated with so much data, but when the presentation is done well and is concise, and this is a big topic, it's $440 million we're talking about. So kudos to you and your team. I'm sure many, many people contributed to this presentation and in the Finance Department, so you all did a great job.
Thank you.
All right? Sure. Any other comments? Okay, June says, what I said. Okay, anything else for the Finance Team here? Okay? Thank you. This is, well, this will be voted on at our June 26 meeting, and if there's no further, we have a lot going on, so don't forget where you're supposed to be this week. We have a lot of graduations to go to. I also want to remind you, board members and administrative team, we have a strategic plan team meeting coming up on Saturday, June 9, which is not too far away. So Dr. Munson and Dr. Jarrett have been working with me on the agenda, so we know what we're going to talk about, and so look forward to that on a Saturday, okay? Saturday, June 9, starting, I think, at 8:30 at Swedish American Hospital's boardroom.
A good time will be had by all.
There you go, and breakfast will be served. Okay? So, any other business for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved to second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Both same sign. We are adjourned at 8:40.